Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 5th, 2024 meeting of the Community Health Board. What an exciting, good meeting, and nice crowd in the room. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our June 18th, 2024 Community Health Board meeting. The minutes have been posted and distributed. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll move those minutes.
It's been moved in second. I do approve the June 18th, 2024 minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we're going to receive a Community Health Board report from the Community Health Service Administrator, Public Health Staff, and the Scott County Medical Director, Lisa Brodsky. Welcome, and thank you for being here today.
There we go. Good morning, Commissioner Breckie and Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. Today, we're meeting as a Community Health Board. We are meeting our statutory requirements from 145A as a meeting as a Community Health Board twice a year, and we met in June as we just approved the minutes. We have some... It's not working. Okay. It's not showing. I'll just carry on. In the Local Public Health Act, it does outline the public health responsibilities. There are six responsibilities, including those listed, almost listed on the PowerPoint. Get in there. Including assuring an adequate local public health infrastructure, which really is about maintaining the basic foundational capabilities to have a well-functioning public health system in the county. It includes health planning, communication, research, data analysis, evaluation, and quality improvement. Also promoting healthy communities and healthy behaviors, such as activities that focus on improving the health of the population, investing in healthy families, promoting or preventing adverse health experiences, and addressing health disparities. Preventing the spread of communicable disease, which we'll hear more of, and we've seen a lot of that lately, including detecting acute infection, reporting infectious disease, and activities to prevent those transmissions. Protecting against environmental health hazards, which actually we do in our county through the Environmental Health Division, as well as through activities such as public health nuisances in the Public Health Department. Preparing and responding to emergencies. In addition to COVID, we do active planning for anthrax and public health impacts of floods and other natural disasters. We develop exercises and write a lot of plans on what we would do in case there was another emergency. And then the assurance of health services, including filling in the gap in our county for health-related services that people cannot access elsewhere at low cost or no cost. And then a really big one, which we're in the throes of right now, which you'll hear a lot more about shortly, is the conducting of the Community Health Assessment to identify health priorities and developing plans to address them. Just a little overview of what we're going to do today. We're going to talk a little bit. I'll spend some time talking a little bit about some trends that we're seeing, and then you'll hear from the Community Health Assessment Team with an update on the Community Health Assessment, and then Dr. Wilcox will talk about disease prevention and control, and some updates on that as well. I have a beautiful slide on the foundational responsibilities that will be coming up shortly. Excellent, thank you. This is the newest national framework that closely reflects Minnesota's work. It's kind of a revitalizing of where public health spends its time, and these... Oh, there we go. These are what government public health must carry out nationwide to meet the foundational public health responsibilities. Thank you. Across the nation and in the state to be effective and promote the health of all citizens. And pretty much before they made this graphic, we were doing all of this work. The new foundational areas do elevate maternal-child health, as well as chronic disease and injury prevention, which previously was embedded in prevention and population health improvement in Minnesota. So we are doing very well on this. And more recently, the state made foundational public health responsibility money available, which allowed us to realign some of our functions and focus a lot more on health promotion. There we go. Just a little bit of trends from the past year that we're seeing. We are seeing an increase in demand in all of public health services, particularly in the mandated services, which we heard about recently when we did our Delivering What Matters session on mandated services. And infectious disease outbreaks has been a big part of that. Dr. Wilcox will talk a little bit more about that. But right now, we are seeing COVID still. We are still have cases. We are giving out many, many COVID tests, which to us is indicating that people are symptomatic. We still have them available currently for free in our lobby. The state is not giving them to us anymore, but we are getting some from the feds, and there definitely is a demand. We recently provided almost 100 COVID test kits to Mikasa, who are going to be giving them out in their food distribution, because they are also having folks asking about it. We still tend to see the increase in TB. Minnesota still is being impacted by pertussis and measles, and we are doing some activities for prevention on there. For the third year in a row, we are still seeing a dramatic increase in our number of refugee health assessments, and you will show you some numbers on that as well, and an increase in need for immunizations, still trying to get kids caught up. We have had a high number of referrals in our family home visiting program, and we are meeting that demand. We have had some staff turnover, which has led to some vacancies and a decrease in our capacity, but I am pleased to say we have a couple of new staff on board. I believe they're here. Very exciting to have them here. And we will be ramping up, and we'll start seeing an increase in those numbers as well. We also, again, still see public health nuisance referrals more so this year. They've been easy to deal with, really quick turnovers, and people have been very cooperative and very appreciative of our assistance that we've been able to provide for them. And we are seeing, we're working on our new program areas. We're still working on early childhood screening in partnership with Shokapi, and a little bit of expansion into Newpric, and working on some opioid and marijuana prevention One of the things that we have been pretty diligent working towards is trying to increase revenue, looking at where we can possibly bill for insurance. I have some trend data here, starting from 2014, and as you can see, there's been an increase. We have been bringing in more money each year. We are on target to hit about $150,000 again this year. Some reasons for this increase is we've been asking, we've been making sure that everybody that has insurance gets insurance. We have now a community health worker that's helping people find insurance options. We also, our PH doc system is a lot more sophisticated than the previous system that we've had, so we've really been able to make sure that we haven't missed anything. Working with our accountant, Darla Munson, who is fabulous, has been able to set us up more recently for billing for interpretation. That almost immediately brought in about $20,000 in revenue that we didn't capture before. So that has been very helpful for us. We've gone from about 3% of our revenue in 2014 to doubling it to about 6% of our revenue. And also, another trend, this arrow here is when I started with the county. So correlation causation, I'm not sure. You be the judge. So what's happening in moving forward, looking ahead in 2025? We know that we're going to be getting some marijuana money, about $142,000. This is supposedly permanent money that we'll be receiving annually. This is money that was given to us legislatively last year. We're still not sure what we're supposed to be doing with it. So hopefully, by spring, they'll figure that out, and we'll come to you with a plan once we know what the, what MDH expectations are there. We also are starting a new arrival pilot project. As you know, our numbers, we've gotten almost 100 new arrivals each year for the past three years. Our current role is just to connect them with refugee health assessments, and that's our current capacity. We know, Commissioner Ulrich, I believe this was your question last time, you brought this up last time, is what are we doing with them? How are we connecting them to resources? And we haven't been, due to lack of capacity, because we've been so overwhelmed just getting them in with refugee health assessments and finding places for them to go. We're hopefully going to change that. I have an AmeriCorps member who will be, currently is looking at best practices, connecting with MDH and the Volags and some other nonprofits that are seeing, that are connecting with these, the new immigrants and refugees and asylees. We're going to be doing some key informant interviews, connecting with the past three years' worth of individuals who arrived in our county, asking them, what do you wish you knew, that you know now, but you wish you knew in your first 90 days, or while, you know, while you were still connected with the Volags? What could have helped you? What wasn't helpful? And making sure that they know where the resources are, connecting them with the Family Resource Center, et cetera. And we're going to be hopefully developing something. We're not sure what that is. Is it an information packet? Is it... I'm not sure what is going to come out of that, but we're going to hear from those folks that have gone through this to find out what would have been most helpful, and seeing how we can do a little bit of a better job when they arrive to our county. We're also going to be working on some age-friendly communities work in partnership with the Aging and Disability area of the county, also again utilizing an AmeriCorps member, which just as a reminder, they're here for 11 months full-time at no charge to the county, except for that computer and a place to sit. And they are wonderful, and it has really been able to expand our workforce without cost to the county. And through that practice, they're going to be identifying best, some best practices. We know that ASHTO, and I don't remember what that acronym stands for.
Association of State Health Association.
I knew my staff would know. Thank you. They're coming out with a public health toolkit to help develop more age-friendly communities, and that's supposed to be coming out early spring. So by the time we complete the, some of our preliminary work, we're hoping to have a toolkit that we can identify what might work in our county for our seniors. So I am now going to turn it over to Natalie and her team to talk about the Community Health Assessment update. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Commissioner Breckie, Commissioners, Community Health Board members. My name's Natalie Halverson. I'm a supervisor with Scott County Public Health, and I'm joined today co-presenters with Yelena Tran, who's our Public Health Data Planner, and also Fatima Ali, who's a second-term AmeriCorps member with our department. They've been helping to lead this process. As Lisa mentioned, it's one of our public health responsibilities to do a Community Health Assessment at least every five years. So our assessment is taking place this year for our Community Health Improvement Plan for 2025 to 2029. Our goals for today are to provide you with an update on where we're at in the process, and then to review our top survey themes and issues that were identified out of the Community Health Survey that was conducted over this summer, share an update with you on where we're at in our timeline for the assessment, and next steps, and then also to engage you all in the process. As a reminder, we use a framework that was developed by the National Association for County and City Health Officials called the MAP, which stands for Mobilizing for Action Through Planning and Partnerships. A bulk of the work of the Community Health Assessment happens in Phase Two, which is telling the community's story. There's three different assessments that we go through for this process. The first one being the Community Partner Assessment, and we completed that already and provided you with an update on that last June. We've also been conducting the Community Status Assessment, and that's where we look at a variety of sources of data, and we also talk to our community and survey them around the health issues that they are facing, and we'll be providing you today with an update on the Community Status Assessment. The final step in this phase is the Community Context Assessment, and I'll provide you with an update on what that process looks like at the end of our presentation. You may recall this infographic from the last time that I presented on the Community Health Assessment. It has evolved over time, and we continue to ensure that this is reflective of the work that we are doing. So we're currently in the fourth row here, where it says, "Collect Input and Action Planning," which started last month. We went through a prioritization process with community health leadership and staff of the issues that were identified out of our Community Health Survey, and we'll be sharing an update on that today. The state's Community Health Improvement Planning Process, the Healthy Minnesota Partnership, kicked off last month, and they have identified four different priorities out of the state Community Health Assessment, and have four different work groups established for those needs, and we have Scott County Public Health Staff who are participating in each of those work groups to ensure that Scott County is represented in that process and has a voice at the table. Today, in this month, we are presenting an update on the Community Health Assessment and engaging various stakeholder groups. Yesterday, we presented this update to the Community Health Improvement Committee, so some of you, this is a duplicate of what you heard just yesterday. We are presenting to this board, and we're also presenting an update to the Resource Council, the Scott County Resource Council, in two weeks to engage our stakeholders in seeking your feedback. And then later this month and in December, we will kick off our Community Context Assessment, where we begin to engage community groups in seeking their voice and feedback in this And now I will turn it over to Fatima and Yelena, who will talk to you about our Community Health Survey process and findings.
Good morning. Hello. So as Natalie said, the bulk of today's presentation involves a Community Status Assessment, which is largely quantitative data from local, regional, state sources. This looks at health behaviors, outcomes, and the social, economic, environmental factors that could influence a person, family, or community's health, and also looks at demographic data as well. So back at the April 2024 CHIC meeting, we had nine different health indicators identified via NHO's MAP process, and those nine indicators were presented poster-style with these different data points, so people could come through, look at them, talk about them, and see what was missing, what stood out to them, and what, like, data points are very, like, big and loud to them. So yeah. And then next, we did the Community Health Survey this past summer, which wrapped up in September. This Community Health Survey was available in the four main languages spoken currently in the county: English, Spanish, Somali, Russian. Our goal was 400 surveys. We had a little bit of a chart going, and we got a total of 655 from Scott County residents. Forty-eight percent of those surveys were completed in-person locations, and that means citywide events. We went to Pirate Lake Beach Days, we went to the Alco Fire Rescue Days, we went to the State Fair, the County Fair, sorry. We also went to community gathering places like Club Pryor, which is a gathering place for 55 and older, I believe it is, currently being renovated. So that was very exciting to get to talk to those community members and engage them about their current opinions on health status and health factors, and how they see themselves in the community. So yeah, and 52% of the surveys were electronic, and by that, we provided an electronic survey to community partners, CHIC members, and other networks within the Scott County residents. So yeah. And then, as you guys can see here, these graphs, look, these two looking at educational attainment and household income, compare Scott County demographics and the survey respondents, and it just so happens that our survey respondents were in similar alignment to the Scott County demographic numbers. And these two next slides are age distribution and rate and ethnicity distribution. I will pass it along to my colleague, Yelena.
Good morning, Commissioners. So our survey had a total of 41 questions that asked respondents about their health status, their health outcomes, their health behaviors, social determinants of health, their community, and then demographic questions. We also included three questions to ask respondents about what they feel are the most important health issues that impact them and their community. And these three questions were broken out into health factors, health problems, and risky behaviors. So we gave a pretty extensive list of health factors, problems, and risky behaviors, and asked respondents to select their top three or their three most important from each category. So health factors included things like social determinants of health. So for this category, we had responses including access to health care, safe and affordable housing, education. For health problems, these looked at health status and outcomes, so chronic disease, aging problems, infectious disease. And then for risky behaviors, it was behaviors and choices that impact an individual's health. So these included individual substance use, distracted driving, social media use, gambling, things like that. So we wanted to look at the top health issues that are affecting the community and narrow it down to identify the most important health issues that are affecting Scott County residents. So the first thing that I'll call your attention to is we combined a variable called Substance Use and Misuse, and then in parentheses, it's any. And this is a combination of response variables of substance use and misuse, alcohol use, prescription drug use, tobacco use, and marijuana use. Those were all separate responses on the survey, and for the purpose of this data collection, we combined them all into one variable, and that's what you see at the top in the far-left column. So that's the first thing I want to call your attention to. The second thing is that we combined responses, the number of responses per each item, and then divided that by the total number of responses to get the percent of responses for each health factor or health issue. So we identified the top 15 overall. That's the far-left column that says overall with the percentages running down the column. These are all the respondents, and the top 15 most responded to option. Now, we also wanted to take into account that certain demographic groups are not going to prioritize health issues the same way. Residents that have lower educational attainment, who are low-income, who are older, may not prioritize the same health issues. And so we wanted to break this out by certain demographic groups and look at the differences, and if there were any outliers in the health issues that respondents selected. So we identified these, certain demographic groups that you see running along the top row. So non-white refers to any respondent that selected a race option that was not white. So this included black and African-American, African and East African, Asian or Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, American Indian or Alaska Native, Hispanic or Latino or Latina, and it also included individuals who selected more than one race. And this represented about 30% of respondents. The second column is, next to non-white, is individuals who had a high school degree or GED or equivalent or less. So those included those that have not completed a high school education, and this represented about 29% of respondents. Low-income or cost-burdened respondents included those with an income less than $35,000. This represented about 20% of respondents. Non-traditional employment refers to respondents who identified that they are a stay-at-home parent or a homemaker, they are self-employed or a farmer, they are a student or in the armed, serving in the armed forces, and this represented about 20% of respondents. Unemployed and out-of-work respondents included those who are unable to work because of a disability, and this was about 8% of respondents. Non-English survey refers to respondents who completed the survey in a language other than English, so Spanish, Russian, or Somali, and this was about 18% of respondents. And then the last column to the far-right is respondents that are age 65 and older, which represented about 11% of all respondents. So the top, you can see that the top 15 health issues varies a lot across the demographic groups, and for all the columns not including overall, not all the responses are going to be in order. So you can see, for example, for ages 65 and older, 70% reported that substance use and misuse was their number-one health issue, but their second-most important health issue at 61% was aging problems, and their third-most important was safe and affordable housing, and this differs from the overall respondents. So we wanted to look at the results across the demographic groups to identify outliers or health issues that were potentially missed when we were just looking at responses overall. So when we did this, you can see at the bottom that the two, the last two health issues, poverty slash living with less and vision problems, were not in the top 15 overall, but they were selected or more highly represented among the certain demographic groups that we looked at, and so we decided to include them in the top 15. So the green boxes here highlight the top 15 health issues that we are moving forward with, and because they are more highly ranked among certain demographic groups. So with these top 15 health issues, this is still a lot of health issues, and we want to be able to condense them or narrow them down to a more manageable number. And to do this, we are relying on input from subject matter experts such as public health staff, the CHIC members, the Community Health Board, including yourselves, and then in a couple weeks, we'll go to the Scott County Resource Council. And the purpose behind these, these, with each of these groups, we're conducting ranking activities to help narrow down the number of health issues, and this purpose is to solicit feedback from these, from these partners and leaders, and to get a pulse check on the issues. So to be able to narrow down the issues, we decided to use prioritization criteria, which is a set of criteria that helps us determine which health issues we should focus on. And we did this by first researching what prioritization criteria were important for our community and our health issues. So we did a review of prioritization criteria that has been used by MDH and a variety of public health organizations, including NHO and the CDC, and we narrowed this pretty broad list down to five prioritization criteria. So feasibility refers to whether there are resources available to address this issue, and this includes staff, time, money, equipment, partner organization support, and it also includes taking into account whether there are existing interventions that are addressing these issues, and whether these existing interventions can make a measurable impact, so are they effective. Importance and magnitude refers to the prevalence of the issue in the community, so how many people it's affecting. It also refers to whether the issue affects long-term health outcomes, and it refers to whether the issue is a new or emerging, it has a new or emerging sense of urgency. Community support refers to whether the community is aware of the issue and they feel that it's relevant to them, whether our partners feel that the issue aligns with the work that they're doing, and also here, we wanted to take into account whether the issue aligns with the county strategic goals and plan. Health equity refers to whether the issue disproportionately affects marginalized or vulnerable groups, so are some, are people from some groups or places more affected by this issue than others. And public health concern refers to whether public health has a clearly established role in addressing this issue, and whether the issue is outlined or aligning with state action-wide plans. So using these five prioritization criteria, we brought our top 15 health issues and the criteria to Scott County Public Health Staff, and we asked them to rank each of the health issues based on the criteria. And our goal was to get from 15 down to a more manageable number, so about 10. And we asked the public health staff to rank each issue from a scale of zero to two, where zero means that it doesn't meet the prioritization criteria at all, and two means that it fully meets the prioritization criteria. So these are the results from the activity that we did with Scott County Public Health that we did with Scott County Public Health Staff, the ranking activity that we did. So each issue was given a score from zero to two based on each criteria. There are five criteria. So the highest score that an issue could get was 10. So we can see that chronic disease received the highest priority score of nine. And this green box just highlights the top, I think it's actually 12 health issues that we decided to move forward with. And Natalie will talk a little bit more about how we continue to narrow down our focus for these top health issues.
Thank you, Elena. So we, as Elena mentioned, we continue to refine this list. And at this point, we go back to our framework, the MAP framework. And it asks us or directs us to take that prioritized list and group them based on cross-cutting themes. And the themes are identified within the framework. So we took the previous list and grouped them based on the themes identified in the MAP. And they include health behaviors and outcomes and social determinants of health. So we essentially took that same group from the previous slide, the top 12, and now have them categorized into various buckets based on the theme. So they include, again, health behaviors and outcomes. And you can see what falls within that group. It's chronic conditions. And those are all the chronic conditions included from the previous list, including those under aging issues. We also have substance use, including all substances, mental health, and also lack of exercise. The second cross-cutting theme is social determinants of health. And that includes access to nutritious foods, access to affordable health services and insurance. And I would say that that includes dental as well, access to safe and affordable housing, and finally, access to transportation. I want to pause here and just say again, the Minnesota Healthy Partnership, the statewide health assessment that was conducted in the improvement process that the state is going through, they have identified four key issues which are reflected on our list as well. And they include substance use, mental health, housing, and health services. So we are in alignment essentially with what the state is finding as common issues across our state.
Natalie, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I must apologize because this is the kind of question I should have given you a heads-up for, but I'm sure you can handle it. As we explain this, if I needed to go talk to some residents about this, they, I think it's easy to see, oh, we did the survey, here's the order of things. And then I understand the public health staff and looking at each of those, you know, like, can we impact it even? Is it in our lane? Which I think this board, that's really important to us. How would I respond to somebody who looks at all this and says, well, it kind of looks like your staff just decided what they liked out of what we liked and picked it. What more can we say in a couple of sentences to show, you know, for example, how access to nutritious foods went way up and social media and cell phone use fell off of what we're going to do? How would you, how would you talk to a general resident about?
Well, first, I would say we're not to our final list yet. So this is a, this is a process that we're going through. And so to pick out issues halfway through the process, I don't think that that's reflective of where we will end up.
Good.
However, those, all of the issues are still on the list, essentially. We're going through a process where we can ensure that the resources that we have and the partners that we have are reflective still of the issues that the community is saying. The next process that we go through, the community context assessment, is going to be very key because we take this information and we go back to the community and say, is this true? Is this reflective of your experience? Should we focus on chronic conditions? Or should we focus on dental, let's say? So we still need to go back to community to confirm where we're at in the process. So it's evolving. But, you know, that's a fair question, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And because now, if at each stage in the process, every month, you were giving this report that, you know, there's a million people watching right now, then they'd hear this. But we only do this twice a year. So that really helped, I think. So thank you for that. And thank you for letting me put you on the spot.
So now we're at the point where we ask you to engage in this ranking exercise. We're not going to view the results live today, but we will definitely follow back up with you to let you know the results of that. So you can either use the QR code or go to mentee.com and use the code here on the screen. You will see the top 15 issues. They're in no particular order. And we ask you to use your own opinions, the knowledge that you have of the needs of the community and your constituencies to rank them from one to 15 in order from highest to lowest. If you need any assistance in that, if you want some data to help inform your decision, please reach out to us. We're happy to provide that to you. But this will be open for a few days for you to participate in that. Are there any additional questions or feedback that you have for us at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to turn the mic over now to the man of the hour, Dr. Wilcox. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Natalie. And I really want to commend this, Natalie and her staff for developing such a fine survey with data that we can look to to provide a higher level of services for the folks within our county. So it's commendable, and I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much. Well, what I'm going to be doing now as part of my presentation is to review with you, the Community Health Board, disease prevention and control-related initiatives. And we'll focus a bit on some of the issues that we looked at back in June at this point. And so certainly, as a number-one area of concern that we reviewed, you may recall, was this infectious disease issue related to tuberculosis. Now, tuberculosis is related to an organism that tends to get into a person's systems, body systems, and can stay there for extended periods of time in a latent setting. So this organism may be around for years and not prevent an infectious disease clinical picture. It can, however, flare up in a situation where if once immunity is compromised, it can then develop an active phase. And it can get into the body's organ systems, especially the lungs, and present an infectious phase where it spreads very, very briskly. So certainly, it is important at this point, especially with the recent exposure that many of us old-timers have had to COVID, where our immune response has been compromised. This is where we're seeing a flare-up in the development of this disease we call tuberculosis. So as we look at the data that's been accrued in 2024, you can see that our staff has been very active in developing plans to manage that problem in 12 active tuberculosis clients in particular. Three diagnoses of this type were completed for a treatment plan in the year 2024. We've had nine newly diagnosed cases in this year as well. Unfortunately, one of them has led to a death within our county at this point. Two have completed treatment, which is what we hope to achieve over a period of several months. It takes several months to have them take antibiotics to get rid of this organism. We've also had an opportunity, of course, if you have someone with this disease living in a confined space with other members of the household, we have to treat those exposed members prophylactically to prevent them from getting the disease as well. So in the year 2020, we had one sibling who received what we call window prophylaxis. And we've had four contact investigations as well. And at the present time, our staff is watching over six clients who were dealing with this latent phase of tuberculosis to make sure they're taking their antibiotics in a timely and appropriate manner in order to prevent them from developing the active phase of this illness. In order to do this, you need to have staff who interacts with these folks. It is critical that they interact with these folks to make sure they're taking this combination, usually of four different antibiotics, that they have to take every day consistently to prevent the development of a lack of response. You have to make sure they're taking these meds every day. And this demands an actual interaction with them. And so what we see in this graphic is directly observed therapy for this organism, this tuberculin organism. And you can see that some of them demand an actual face-to-face interaction with the client. And as you get to know them, you may be able then at some point to do a video connection with them and make sure they're properly taking their medications for this period of time. So this graphic shows us then, over the last several years, exactly that number of direct and indirect video interactions that our staff has had to take on to make sure these folks with latent TB within our county are properly managing their illness. Now, you may recall in our discussion in June, we were a bit concerned because there appears to be a flare-up, unfortunately, in this tuberculin problem. And the question came up, very rightly so, why is this the case? You know, why do we have more folks dealing with this infection than we've had in previous years? Well, this graphic shows, I think, pretty nicely what we're dealing with here. There's an increased testing and surveillance opportunity for picking up on this organism. And, you know, it also, we talked about the immune response that folks have to head off an active phase of this illness. Well, COVID, the pandemic, unfortunately blunted many of our folks' immune response to infectious diseases of any type. And this occurred because some of the meds we had to give to curtail significant hospitalization, intensive care management of COVID, we had to curtail the inflammatory response by giving them a medication called a steroid. And this steroid not only blunted that response, but it blunted the response then to this latent bug we call tuberculosis as well. So in our elderly, we're seeing more and more of that because of immune suppression. And of course, it's also related, of course, to some folks who have come to our county from different world countries who have been exposed to this illness, and we have to manage their problem as well. So that's why we're seeing an increase in TB infection within our county at this point. This next graphic shows us then, okay, what are we talking about? Folks coming into our county from overseas? Well, what we're looking at here is the Refugee Health Program then. This underlines, I think, over the last several years, the number of folks who have come into our communities from third-world countries where tuberculosis unfortunately developed in a latent manner within their bodies. And they're now here in our county, and we're dealing with them through part of our refugee health programming. And you can see in our graphic here the number of these folks who are presently in our county that we're assisting to provide oversight for in this refugee health program related to tuberculosis exposure. Now, as I move on to another phase of what I wanted to cover with you relative to vaccinations, do you have any specific questions about tuberculosis and the type of organism this is and how we're dealing with it? Have any questions about that? You good? You okay? All right, good. Well, you may recall in June also, we talked about another phase that we're dealing with in monitoring infectious disease, and that's the immunizations. And as we move on to our discussion in that area, you may recall, at least had a graphic earlier on, indicating that unfortunately, there appeared to be an uptick in certain infectious diseases in particular that in the past had been nicely handled with a vaccination program. And the question was, well, you know, if we've got vaccines available, why in the world are we developing these illnesses again? Well, the bottom line was, unfortunately, we have not been able to vaccinate appropriately our young people to a level that prevents them from developing some of these disease processes. Now, I'm very happy to say, however, that in our county, we have a very robust public health initiative on getting our vaccinations up to date in all ages of our citizens. And what you can see in this graphic is that uptick, as we continue to educate our population in this county about the benefits of vaccinations for illnesses that can respond to proper vaccines, we've seen an uptick in the number that are getting vaccinated. We need to continue to work on this. We need to continue to provide this kind of opportunity for the citizens of our county, especially the young people, in order to get them vaccinated to prevent breakthrough illnesses of the type that we had concerns about in the past. And you may recall that those were illnesses related to measles, illnesses related to pertussis, illness related to viruses of various types, influenza, and so on. We need to continue to educate our population, especially the parents of our young people, to get themselves vaccinated and their children vaccinated in an appropriate manner. We're on a good upswing here. We need to continue to work that. All right, any questions at all about the vaccine program then and how we're utilizing that to handle exposure to infectious disease?
Mr. Beer.
Thank you. I don't know what page it was. It was back in the active TB of 2024. Slide, there was nine newly diagnosed in 2024. Serve 12 active was the first bolt, then the second bolt, nine newly diagnosed. The question I have is, I know the last time we had this meeting, and then again today, the, you know, the graphs show that largely the uptick is because the refugee program is, no, I'm getting a shake. I'm getting a shake.
Let me say this, that's a factor. However, I really want to emphasize that it's related not only to that, but also this recent pandemic of COVID has unfortunately compromised the immune response of many of our elderly who early in their lives were exposed to this organism, and they have it as a latent phase of their illness. And when their immune compromise occurred related to the treatment for COVID and prevention of COVID developmental complications, it opened them up for this active phase of tuberculosis that was in their bodies through their life.
So that's my question, is the nine, is the nine? I'm seeing it shaking. We have two people at the podium. I don't know if you can see it on camera. But where is that group? Is that, are they related, like siblings unrelated? They came with it? And so they're now newly diagnosed? What does that exactly mean?
Thank you, Commissioner Beer. I did want to make a correction. My notes must, might not have been as clear. I do apologize, Dr. Wilcox. Almost all of our active DB cases are longtime citizens. They are not refugees. And the number on this slide here is not those that have come in with TB. These are just our refugees. These are just our refugees. Most, they are all screened for TB prior to arrival, and most of them have not been, like, I don't think any of them actually that we've seen recently have had TB. So these are just the new refugees. That includes Asilies, those that are coming in for refugees through, like, the Ukraine, through the Volags. None of them actually are positive TB. They may have, so that is a correction to the slide.
So let's just clarify, so the slide, the refugee health program, this is in here to educate us about how many more referrals and assessments the department's doing. This is not related to the TB data.
Correct.
And these are two separate data sets.
Yeah, two completely separate. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Brokey. These are two completely separate ones. These are like U for U parolees that qualify for refugee benefits, like MA SNAP cash benefits. They go through the Volags, they come in, they've already had an IGRO, which is a test for TB, and then we connect them with Health Resources. So that's a completely different subject than this one. Now, just why I also wanted to point out a clarification is we're not the only county that's seeing an increasing TB. Across Minnesota, a lot of the public health directors were asking the same question. Part of the gift that keeps on giving from COVID is that it is causing those that are in latent TB, that we have a lot of individuals in our county, in our state, that have had latent TB, it's causing them to transfer over to active TB. We have also seen a lot of cases of, actually, one in Scott County going to the hospital for COVID and finding out at that time that she also had TB, or they also had TB at the time. So it is, just, there is, just happens to be a connection between, because of the immune suppression between COVID and TB, and that is likely what is driving the dramatic increase in TB cases.
Well, and so of the nine, or whatever the actual number is, the nine newly diagnosed, 12 active, you're saying many of those are longtime residents? Because I think I was under the impression, because we always kind of have the TB near the refugee slide in past presentations, so, and again, it sort of doesn't really matter, but it's, I thought there was a correlation that the more of the refugee population and the uptick that we see there, again, the refugee program tends to add to the TB watch. But you're saying of these numbers, many of them, or most of them, most are not part of the refugee, but refugees are all screened as part of it, but may not actually fall into this category.
Correct, Commissioner Beer. And the reason why we put them together is because those are in the same area of disease prevention and control, same staff. So we have, we haven't increased our staff in that area. Previous years, we've seen like a handful of refugees, four, six, a couple of active TB cases, and now we're seeing 100 new refugees that the same staff have to work with, as well as, you know, 12 active TB cases who are getting daily observed therapy. It's a lot harder to manage than two active TB cases that are getting daily observed therapy. So it really is just about the burden on that area for these mandated services. We don't have a choice. If we had 100 TB cases, we would have to do daily observed therapy on 100 TB clients. And the same with refugee health assessments. We also don't have the ability to say, you know, we can't take any more refugees. It's they get to choose where they want to go. We have a Slavic Baptist church here, so, and there's family here, so that's why a lot of the Ukrainian refugees have come to Scott County and a variety of other reasons. But if you look at the state map, we have, for the size of our county and per population, we have gotten pretty much the same that Dakota County has per population. So we have had a lion's share of the refugees, and they're coming, I mean, these are large families. Our family that just came the other day is a family of 15, and we have to track down immunizations. I mean, it's a lot of work that we have to do for each family, and the larger the family, the more work it is, because we're tracking down vaccination records from, like, Uzbekistan for 15 people and trying to get them into a clinic. And we have had, luckily, we've had two opportunities in our county to make some new relationships with clinics, so we've been able to get them in. It is, it is challenging, but they also perform additional tests and do another TB test, I believe, as they arrive. But they are screened for TB prior to arrival, which is why we haven't seen any TB from our refugees.
How is the visual, the virtual, we kind of talked about that before, the virtual, hey, are you taking those pills? And like, how is that seem to be tracking and going well?
Well, it's going well in the, in the, in the way that we actually can get them done every day, what we need to. Our county is pretty large, so I don't have, thankfully, don't have to have staff drive like an hour to a bail plane and back. So it is enabling us to meet the demand. Luckily, we have that technology, and it has worked out well. We, it's not the best practice, but we're able to at least set up their medication once a week, and we are, we seem to be able to manage the caseload because we have the video and the virtual opportunity. We have had a couple challenges, and in those situations where there's language barriers, or there's questions, or there's, they're having some kind of reaction to a medication, which tends to happen, we do go out in person, which you see the orange bar there is the ones that we really just needed to go out in person, or it takes a while to set up their medication, or there's a lot of questions. You did ask earlier, we, I believe we have one family that has two, I'm looking at Stacy or Michael, one family that has more than one person in the household that has TB, so those are done at the same time. But overall, those are pretty much 11 or 12 different individual contacts per day, one day to Friday.
Thank you.
Other questions? Or Dr. Wilcox, did you have more to add on that?
Just wanted to mention, when it comes to the latent TB, if we have an individual who has that diagnosis, and they're not actively showing signs of spread of the infection, you can treat them. You can provide antibiotics for them to prevent the active phase from breaking through. So we're very intent on dealing with that kind of patient clientele as well. Relative to the vaccinations, I can tell you that our county is very intent on getting our residents and our citizens updated on vaccinations that are appropriate for them. I can tell you, I work, of course, in our Health Matters Free Clinic, and some of my staff are here that I work with, Mike and Stacy. And I can tell you, at the time of the end of our patient's interaction with me, Stacy and Mike then move into a review of the vaccination needs of that patient and their families, and they move ahead with establishing a time when they can come in and get those immunization updates done. So we're very intent on following through to make sure we're plugging ahead vigorously to get the citizens of our county properly vaccinated.
Thank you. Other questions for Lisa's staff, Dr. Wilcox? Commissioner.
Just a quick question, and maybe it was covered, but who is routinely tested for TB?
Well, you know, I tell you what, now that this disease is within our county and within our state, those of us who do healthcare, we're tested on a regular basis for exposure to this organism. And depending upon where we're doing our work, there are certain parts of the state where every six months you get tested as a healthcare provider related to exposure to this illness or to this bacterial organism. For sure, once a year now, once a year now, we're asked by the organizations in which we provide healthcare to show proof that you've been tested for exposure to this organism. So we're recommending early on, as part of the vaccination program, that individuals be tested on a regular and ongoing basis for exposure to this organism.
Do we test people in jail? It's a concentrated population of people, and?
That's a great point. Yes, we do. Because if you end up with this organism in a group of folks in a confined space, it spreads very, very briskly. And so, yes, one of the things that happens when a person enters our correctional facilities, they are tested for that exposure to that particular organism. And if it shows that they're positively showing, they put a skin test on called the PPD, and if that shows positive, they get a chest X-ray, or you can do a blood study to see if they really have the organism that they're dealing with as an infectious organism, and you treat them accordingly.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? County attorney.
Just Commissioner Ulrich, is when I was in the military, we were regularly tested with TB, so all military are at least once a year tested for TB.
Yeah. Many of our EMS providers, if they're working, say, in areas where there's a lot of this sort of bacterial problem in place, they're tested every six months for exposure to that organism.
And when you say, like, I would just add on, you know, healthcare providers, and that includes, at least from my knowledge, at most even staffs of group homes, staffs of any, I mean, healthcare-related type situation, you're tested upon hiring usually and then have some updates. So I have two things. One would be, I think, Lisa, based on our questions, if we could get a little more data about the refugee population and where they're coming from, when I look at Minnesota Department of Health website, it's not quite up to date, it's, you know, 2022. And I think that just will help us as we interact with citizens who maybe have other information or not correct. It's good for us to have the correct information on that, that would be awesome. And then number two is, Lisa, during your presentation, you also talked about, and I know this has been good work being done by your department for a long time, helping people make sure if they're eligible for healthcare insurance, they get it and they're on it, and I do appreciate the additional revenue and making sure we're billing it appropriately. But I think one thing that every so often, at least I and maybe my colleagues come up with, is we have citizens who don't qualify for our healthcare programs that are offered, and they need mensure, some other things. And for us to know who it is in your department, you talked about that you have somebody who maybe can help those folks, and that would be good for us to know, even good for others who are out in the community, maybe in libraries and things, to know. Again, we can't inundate this person, but if we have somebody who, if folks are not able to get signed up for mensure or any of those health insurance options that aren't offered through Scott County, it'd be great to have a resource to send them to. I think those were my two. And that gave everybody else any more questions for this twice-a-year meeting presentation? I would just say thank you. Thank you for all the work you do every day. It is important, and I think when we have these meetings, we realize just the breadth of what's going on in public health in Scott County and helps us appreciate all that. So thank you for all you do. Thank you for a good meeting. And next then, we'll go to item four, which is adjournment.
Second.
So I moved in second to adjourn the November 5th Community Health Board meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll just make an announcement that we'll reconvene in a board meeting in about two minutes. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried, the meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Luntz.
Right, thank you. All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the November 5th, 2024 meeting of the Scott County Board of Commissioners to order. We just adjourned a meeting from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., and we already said the pledge, so we won't do that right now. There's two things I just want to say before we start with the agenda. One is it's Election Day, and I hope everybody has voted, is voting. I do want to just call out our tremendous staff and volunteers who have worked so hard to get us to today. A lot of folks in Scott County have taken the opportunities to absentee and early vote and all the folks working today. At my own precinct in Jackson Township, at 6:55, we already had a line of folks lined up, and at 7:00, the doors opened, and the folks there did everything they were supposed to do, and I'm sure they'll do it all day. The folks working in our precincts and our election sites are likely working 12, 14, 16-hour days today, so I do want to thank them and appreciate them for making sure that everybody's vote counts and is appropriate and is done with integrity. So I appreciate that.
Can I comment also? We attended the Association of Minnesota Counties District Meeting last week, and the CAP students had presented on the fact that they are working in elections, and they're helping out with elections and doing a great job. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you, and that was a good, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Ulrich, in a minute. I'm just going to welcome, we have five CAP students with us this morning to view the county board meeting. If you just want to wave, thanks for being here today. The CAP students are students from Shaka B. High School who are in the Human Services Academy and currently hold their class here at the Government Center in the afternoons. I think you had to get special permission to get out of your other classes this morning, so welcome. Commissioner Ulrich.
Well, I just wanted to comment on the early, I just wanted to comment on the early voting that was, has been offered, you know, throughout the county and how great that is. It's early in person, so, you know, my experience was less than 10 minutes, you know, maybe five minutes to vote, but very quick anyhow. And so I just encourage people to consider that in the future, that that's a really slick way to vote and not get stuck in a line, you know.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So polls are open until 8:00, and many of you will be watching the news and media, but be sure to check out the Minnesota Secretary of State site, as that's where our data will go to be reported. And with that, we'll move on to our agenda. Item number two on our agenda is any amendments to the agenda? The agenda's been posted and distributed. Colleagues, any amendments to the agenda? And it will stand approved as posted. Next, on to item three, we have some minutes to approve. First, we have minutes from our September 23rd, 2024 joint meeting with the Three Rivers Park District Board and our Scott County Board. Those minutes have been posted and distributed. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
May I move approval?
Second.
So I moved to a second end to approve the September 23rd, 2024 minutes of the joint board meeting between Three Rivers Park District and Scott County. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Next, we have the minutes from our last board meeting, October 15th, 2024. Those minutes were also posted and distributed. Does anyone have corrections or additions to those minutes?
May I move approval?
So I moved in second to approve the October 15th, 2024 minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. On to item four on our agenda, which is recognition of interested citizens. If you'd like to speak to the board on a matter not on the agenda, please approach the podium, say your name and address, and you have up to five minutes per person per Welcome, sir.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Trevor Wineswell. I live at 1633 East 205th in Lydia. And we are a very concerned group of people. We have been to a few of their town hall meetings concerning the building of an industrial park in Lydia itself, Alpha 13. We have asked numerous questions, and the board itself of the Lydia Township in Cedar Lake have blatantly lied and given us false information on this building and its concerns. As for the problems with this is the known traffic issue already on Lydia, in Lydia Alpha 13, as well as the property taxes that we've raised from the value of the land that has just been sold for this business. We move outside of the city to get away from the city. We don't want the city coming to us. When we asked what it's going to do to our property taxes and the value of our land, and they blatantly said it will not. It will not affect your property. But the problem is, it will, because the value of the land next to our properties will go up in value because it is now usable. They're using it to use, sorry, using it for making warehouses and other industrial parks. We already have potential plans for some 50,000-square-foot warehouse that is going to be plopped right there on the 100 acres that was sold by the township. When we were asked, when we asked the county board, the city board, what would we do about the road maintenance? We already just had that road completely redone not too long ago. The Lydia intersection from that church, Alpha 13, is a very high-traffic intersection, and it's actually very dangerous. This past year, I've almost been hit twice on a motorcycle and one of my cars. A lady stood up in a board meeting and asked, what do we do about this situation? He said, there's no talk. The board replied, there is no talk on changing the intersection. She says, well, does somebody have to die before we have a better intersection? Because from what you're proposing, we're going to have a highly trafficked area with very large trucks that are bringing to this warehouse delivery vehicles and not just general public that people work there. And he said, unfortunately, somebody will have to die before anything is taken action-wise at that intersection. We do not, the citizens of this township do not want that industrial park, that entire thing, to be put up. There's not one person in that board meeting that we sat there that said, yay, let's do it. It doesn't bring any value to our county, our community, I should say. They said that the money that was made by that sale will go into the budget. We looked at that budget, they are grossly being negligent with our budget. They are taking our money, and they're putting it towards things that do not help the public. We have now Prior Lake Fire Department that is on this, what would you say, an agreement that they are going to be then protecting our citizens. There was a fire not far from that church that took down somebody's hobby farm barn. Jordan, middle Lockington, and not Prior Lake, New Prague showed up, took care of the fire. Guess who showed up last? Prior Lake. Prior Lake somehow got the contract to protect their citizens. They said that now, since they are doing so, they have to get a ladder truck. Now they have full-time fire. Why is it that the budget is almost three-quarters of a million dollars to protect our citizens, and then the sale of this land, and they blatantly lie, saying that our values and our taxes are not going to go up, when the value of the property next door is going to be up? Because now other businesses and other people are going to come out to this area, because land is cheaper, and build a business. Where is, where is the line being drawn here where we take accountability in our local governments, no matter how large or how small they are? These people are straight lying to the citizens of Lydia and Cedar Lake and all the townships that they oversee. And we're not having it. We want serious answers. Why does it take someone dying to get that intersection taken care of? Why is it that they're in control of our budgets, but they won't tell us what the money is going for? And they're just blatantly blowing us what the money is going for? And they're just blatantly blowing it on things that we could have done a little bit, they call them studies, on figuring out who's going to be the best option to keep the welfare of this community and the people safe and to be actually spending their money wisely. Why is it that we're spending almost $700,000 on Prior Lake's fire when they respond last? We are concerned citizens. We do not agree with the sale of that land. They sold it with any, now, all of our knowledge. Nobody agreed to it. Nobody wants it. It butts up to multiple homes, ours included. We have a really nice dream property, and now we're going to be staring at a 50,000-square-foot warehouse, not to mention light pollution. We try to get away from that. We already have, you know, the Mittelwaketon with their teepee. We see that. Everyone sees it. Why should we be staring at the backside of a warehouse now? There's eight people on that same road that have their properties butted right up against it. Nobody wants it, and we're not getting the answers. These people are blatantly lying to us, and we would like some answers. And Barb, I know that that's your kind of a district, so you're kind of overseeing some of these things. Is there anybody we can speak to? Is there anybody that could really just put a halt to this and really give it the citizens of Lydia? Because that directly affects them, the people of Lydia, the church. My entire life, I've lived in Shakopee. I've lived in this county. And everybody knows Lydia, the church. As soon as that place goes up, it's not going to be known for the church. It's going to be known for that giant warehouse, that big, ugly eyesore. And all that's going to do is going to cause more traffic, more accidents, and higher taxes. And the last thing we want is to spend more money on taxes. We already have a problem not taking our money and putting it back in our pockets. It just goes. It just goes. More taxes, more fees. We don't want it. We're very irritated that we have these people that are in control of our money, but they have no, they have no care on our well-being or our properties, because they don't live there. They live on the lake, but they spend all the money to make the lake nicer. So why should we be okay with them building a giant monstrosity in our backyards? Would you? Would you be okay with living in that? I don't think so. That's all I have to say, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wineswell. Just so you know, we don't usually respond to things that come before us today, but I do want to make just a correction or so. The district is in Commissioner Wolf's district. Not that we don't all represent the whole county and all care about the whole county. No, that's okay. So that's a good connection. Second of all, I hope that you, it sounds like, so we're talking about Spring Lake Township, and just want to make it clear, that's a separate jurisdiction than Scott County. They have elected officials. Our role is the county planning and zoning. So, this proposed development hasn't come in front of this board yet and will not until it goes to Planning Commission. And you probably know about that, so there should be some more opportunities for public input. And Mr. Wagner, over on the end here, is here for another matter on the agenda, but I hope that at the end of the meeting, you'll connect with him if you haven't already, and make sure that you're getting notice of any next steps in this development that Scott County is involved in. So, just wanted to make that clear, and thank you for being here today. We have this item on our agenda every meeting for good reason, to allow people to come and talk about these things. Thank you. Any other interested citizens who'd like to approach the board today? All right, next, we will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda has 11 items. These items are usually fairly standard items that either we have been workshopped already, have been evaluated by our planning or other boards, or are standard items that go on consent. I'll read all items on the consent agenda, and then any board member may remove an item for further discussion or separate consideration. Item 5.1, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-204, authorizing entering into agreements with Pinnacle Services Incorporated, Thomas Allen Incorporated, AB&amp;B Services LLC, Mount Olivet Rolling Acres, and People Incorporated for contracted case management services. 5.2, adopt Resolution Number 2024-221, approving estimates of just compensation for right-of-way for the County Highway 27 bypass lanes project. 5.3, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-230, authorizing entering a contract with Vate and Company Incorporated for the Pica Creek Sediment Reduction Project. 5.4, adopt Resolution Number 2024-272, authorizing final payment to Sir Lines Lot LLC for the 2024 Annual Pavement Marking and Striping Project. 5.5, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-278, authorizing entering into an agreement with Kyrashaft Technology Corporation for the ServiceNow Technology Platform. 5.6, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-280, authorizing entering into an agreement with Braun Intertech for professional engineering services on the Trunk Highway 169 and Bluff Drive Overpass Project. 5.7, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-281, approving the findings of fact and conclusion for the environmental assessment worksheet and a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the Schultz Mine Expansion. 5.8, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-284, approving a preliminary plat and final plat of Hessian One McHugh Family Farm Partnership applicant and property owner. 5.9, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-285, authorizing entering a purchase agreement for an acquisition of real property for the Blakely Bluffs Park Reserve and a grant request to the Metropolitan Council for Acquisition Funding. 5.10, to set a public hearing for November 19th, 2024, at 10:15 a.m. to receive public comment on the 2024 Scott County Solid Waste Management Plan Update. And 5.11, to approve payroll processing of personal actions. So colleagues, these are the 11 items on consent. Are there any that you would like to remove for separate consideration?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
So I moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? I would like to just make one comment. We have a, and this is a general comment on a type of item that's on the consent agenda, and so, 5.7, where we're declaring a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement. We did this meeting or two ago for another project, and local media reported that we made that decision without discussion, which was true. It was on the consent agenda. And there's some people who read that article who think that we approved a project. And I just want to make it clear that what we're approving there is a negative declaration for a further study based on technical information that was in our packet and that we all reviewed, and that in general, when staff is recommending a negative declaration for the need for that further study, we do place those items on consent, and that has been a fairly common practice, at least in my mind, and that we'll continue to do that unless a board member thinks otherwise. But it is not approving a project. In the case of the last one, I'm just picking on the one that's here today, and I see you here. We're not picking on this. I'm just using it as an example. So, any comments or further discussion on the motion? All right, with that being said, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Onto item six, which is presentation of the Spirit of Scott 2024 Quarter Two and Quarter Three Recognition Awards. And I see we have some Spirit of Scott committee members here for that presentation. Welcome.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So, since we have Quarter Two and Quarter Three, I brought an assistant today, Caitlin.
Wonderful.
Since you're probably sick of seeing me all the time. So, as you know, the Spirit of Scott is an organization that supports our county employees with the support of the county board and county administration, and we like to recognize people that go above and beyond in their duties. So for Quarter Two, 2024, the first, Michelle, there we go, thank you. So the first nominee is Myra Lopez. She was nominated by Lisa Berkeulsmeyer. So Lisa had received a three-fold pamphlet from another county with the other county's logo. They gave Lisa permission to change it to reflect Scott County, so she asked Myra if she could do this for her. Without hesitation, Myra said yes, and within a half hour, she had completed it, to the point with some other changes needed. It's wonderful to be able to count on other people to help out, so thank you to Myra for that. Our next is Brandon Severson. He was nominated by Tom Larson. So Brandon has been on a mission to find efficiencies and cost savings for the Scott County Fleet Department. He stepped up temporarily to fill in the parts shop supervisor position and has uncovered items that the county has been buying that seem to be expensive. Brandon did some intensive research and found a new vendor that supplies the same products at a largely reduced cost and lower shipping options. Tom feels that Brandon deserves recognition for going above and beyond, and also would like to mention how well he handles the county's motor pool. He has demonstrated excellent customer service skill, no matter how simple or complex a user's phone call may be. He can handle them with a smile. He is still performing all the normal mechanical duties on top of this as well, so kudos to Brandon for that. Next is Daniel Silva, nominated by Deb Brazel. Deb was visiting with a group of Scott County residents, and two of them started talking about dealing with Scott County's customer service area. Her natural instinct was a feeling of trepidation, but they both talked about the wonderful interaction they had with Daniel, first in a phone conversation and then in person. One needed assistance getting her husband's driver's license renewed, and the other needed assistance in renewing her adult autistic daughter's passport. Both spoke highly of Daniel's patience, his can-do attitude, and how easy he made these renewals for them. So thanks, Daniel, for your great customer service. Before I turn it over to Caitlin, I want to thank the board and admin for the support for Customer Service Week that we had a couple weeks ago, and your help in getting that organized. But I'll turn it over to Caitlin for Quarter Three.
All right, our Quarter Three nominations were Kristy Rieger, who was nominated by Jacob Gressing. Jake wanted to recognize and thank Kristy Rieger for her exceptional work on the MDE Library Construction Improvement Grant. Kristy gathered information across multiple meetings with the city and county staff, created a draft grant application based on that information, and ensured that all parties were comfortable with the final product. She worked in close coordination with the Belle Plaine City Administrator on the final submission, which had to be completed by the city. As a result of Kristy's work, MDE awarded $748,728.50 for the expansion and improvement of the Belle Plaine Library. Well done, Kristy. Tate Sexy, Chad Weller, and Chris Meyer were also nominated by Troy Beam. Troy says that these guys did a remarkable job taking care of the RTF during the flood. They went above and beyond and babysat the facility 24 hours a day and made sure the pumps were running and the RTF was protected. Tate even slept in his car at the facility on Saturday during the worst of the flood. We owe a huge thank you to these guys for doing that. And then we also want to just mention that we are planning an event for Spirit of Scott in January, which is going to be a second breakfast, and we'll be providing coffee and hot chocolate and probably muffins to the employees of Scott County for all of their work and dedication.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, and congratulations to these employees. I know all our employees often go above and beyond, but it's so great to highlight and recognize these particular ones. Sleeping in the car overnight, did you have a comment about that?
I just thought maybe I'd be up in the car.
So thank you, and thank you to the committee. I think as our organization's grown and, you know, over 700 employees, it's hard to get to know each other. I really appreciate the work of the committee in honoring and recognizing employees. We have some certificates here for any of the recipients here. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your work, and congratulations to these recipients. Commissioner Beer.
Well, I just noticed, you know, the last few of these, everyone's becoming a little more camera shy, so maybe we need to, maybe we need to get them back in the boardroom to, you know, show themselves. So, but nice work. Thank you very much for doing that.
Wonderful. All right, we will move on to item number seven, which is to adopt Resolution Number 2024-279, recognizing November 4th through 11th, 2024, as Operation Green Light to shine a light of hope and support for veterans. We have our Scott County Veterans Service Officer here to present. Welcome, Derek.
Good morning, Commissioners. Resolution Number 2024-279, recognizing Operation Green Light. Whereas, the residents of Scott County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, Scott County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members gain access to more than $52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas, approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas, studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas, Scott County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in and for the county of Scott, Minnesota, with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Scott County hereby declares November 4th through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved in observance of Operation Green Light, Scott County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or home during the week of Veterans Day.
Wonderful. Thank you for presenting that resolution.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-279, recognizing November 4th through 11th, 2024, as Operation Green Light to shine a light on hope and support for veterans.
Second.
Thank you. I think we have universal second there. Discussion?
Yeah, I would like to comment that last year, I had received comments about the green light, and people in Shakopee were wondering what was happening. And I've been trying this year to encourage people to get out their green light. I have my own green lights sitting outside my door. So, I hope people in Scott County, I'll say Shakopee, take the advantage of this and learn more about what the veterans are doing in Shakopee and Scott County. So, thank you very much.
Other comments?
I would like to say ditto to some of those comments. I think we, you know, we have Veterans Day, but it's important to think about our veterans every day and all year long. And I'd like to be able to use this time and Operation Green Light to highlight Derek and his staff, and the fact that we do have a veteran services officer, and we do have resources here for our veterans. And some of them are very specific to their military service, but if, even if not, it's a good entryway into the county, and Derek can connect veterans with other services and things here that can be helpful. So, Derek, I don't know if you, before we take a vote here, want to say anything else about the upcoming lunch and how people can still buy tickets, and if there's any veterans or friends of veterans watching, how they could participate in the luncheon?
Yep, so our annual Veterans Appreciation Lunch, it has typically historically been on Election Day, but the county building is a little busy, so we pushed it out a week. It's going to be next Wednesday, November 13th. The lunch itself is from 11:00 to 1:00. Veterans eat free, with tickets that are purchased by county employees. Non-veterans can have lunch for a $6 charge. This year, we are also including a resource fair to see how that goes from 9:00 to 2:00, where we intend to monopolize the entire west end of the Government Center with both county resources, with different departments that we end up bringing veterans to most with both county resources, with different departments that we end up bringing veterans to most frequently. And then we've lined up a couple of more veteran-specific resources. We'll have the VA, the Minnesota VA, a service dog organization, and then Heartland Credit Union, who donated $500 to our lunch, will also be there. But November 13th, 11 to 1 is lunch, 9 to 2 is a resource fair. Tickets can still be purchased for veterans in the Veteran Service Office. Anytime the government center is open, you can buy them up until you're standing in line for lunch. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Derek. Any further discussion? All right, there is a motion on the table. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We will move on to committee reports and Commissioner updates. And Commissioner Wolf, could we start with you, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 16th, I was out at Elko New Market and you might have heard there's a water bottling plant going up out there. And so I got a tour and I think you guys were invited. I don't know if anybody else went, but anyhow. That building is enormous. Anyhow. I think it's like over one half mile around it and so we walked through and, yeah. They're gonna, they're gonna bottle a lot of water over there. So anyhow, I think they're scheduled to open on March 27th of next year to have their first bottles of water go out. On the 21st, Credit River Met. Everything's kind of quiet out there, although there is a couple contested races today. So get out and vote, like the chair said. Met with the Administrator on the 22nd. The mosquito control had a meeting on the 23rd. Solid Waste Management met on the 24th. And one of the biggest things is still is, and it's gonna be, a lot of tree waste from dead trees, you know, this ash thing. And just in my neighborhood, there's 250 that they planted 20 years ago to line the boulevards. And most of them are either sick or dying or are going to be sick and dying. And so, and that's not just unique to us. It's, there we park, I mean, there's gonna be wood everywhere. So I'm hoping there's a good place. I think the Shakopee Midwaketon, they're gonna try to burn some more of that. So that'd be a nice thing to convert that to electricity. Elko New Market met that evening. Everything quite out there also. Then on the 29th, the Elko New Market met with the mayor, the administrator, and our county administrator, Leslie Vermillion. Had a nice meeting there about things going on out in that area. And then last night, Cedar Lake Township met and they had a couple concerns about some voting things they had seen. And so I had them text me the deals. If you see where they're texting, like some fake ballots or whatever, and there's a square or a rectangle and there's a dot in it or something by somebody's. We don't use rectangles here. We use ovals. So anyhow, it was a fake deal, so I'm glad we could get that stopped and corrected, at least in that room last night. So, but anyhow, I can't wait till this election's over. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolf. Commissioner Brennan?
October 18th, I attended the Scott County 55+ Expo. And various departments from Scott County were there in attendance. The law library, the transportation, the sheriff, and volunteer people, staff were there. So that was great to see. It was really well attended by people within Scott County. October 19th, I went to, or helped out at the City of Shakopee Cleanup Day. And it was reported that there was 229 vehicles that went through. There are 31.56 tons of waste was turned in. 10% or 10 tons of that was yard waste and 11.67 tons were commercial construction and demolition material. And then in addition, there was household waste, electronics, and shredding and furniture. So it was a very busy day and it's supported by a grant that they received from Scott County. October 23rd, I met with Chief Tate from the City of Shakopee. October 25th was the Dakota Scott Workforce Board Meeting. October 28th was the Association of Minnesota County District 10 Meeting. And I really think the meeting was on partnership and collaboration. And we talked about collaborating, how we can collaborate or the need to collaborate on housing for children with mental illness and also solid waste. October 28th, Barb and I, our Commissioner Warkman-Burkey and I, spoke to the CAP students after that AMC District 10 meeting and talked about what Scott County does and Scott County government does. October 30th, I sat in the MBTA meeting. October 4th, I met with staff, with Commissioner Alrick, to talk about Met Council Imagine 2050 Plan and some of the comments that we would like to bring forth to the Met Council. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Beard?
Thank you. On the 15th through the 18th of October, went on a little field trip out to Billings, Montana with Jake Gruising and Dr. Ward. Jake, I believe, I think it was you, I'm blaming you for this in a good way. You're the one that found, came across this group called CLDI Community Leadership and Development, Inc. Is we're more open? I think we've always been, the county's been open to new things. Looking at best practices, which I don't really like that term, but ways that people are doing things in ways that bring real outcomes to real people in real ways. And how can we best maybe do some of those same things here? Whether it's us or another nonprofit, third party that might work in this county someday. So went out there and spent a couple of days. I think we really only had two days with the crew, but it felt like a month in a good way, like in a really good way. They have a 40-year head start. It's a group that is really changing the narrative of the south side of Billings. They're literally on the other side of the tracks, literally. And making a real difference, again, to real people in real ways and delivering outcomes and transforming people's lives. And they take zero government money. It's self-funded, grant-funded, and just, wow. Kind of left me speechless, which even with my hands, I can sit and calm the peace and the things that are happening out there. And I think we're gonna bring some of those things back. It's not necessarily our role to do that, but to be and create an atmosphere in this county that would allow that type of organization or others to come alongside and do the work that needs to be done in people's lives to really make generational transformative change. So super excited about that. We still need to do a debrief, get that on the calendar just to, and then hopefully we hear more about that and other partners that might be coming. Let's see, the 22nd, Chair Vice Chair, 23rd, MMCD and Fish Board, new and fun things happening. And then, oh, yesterday was the Chick Board, Community Health Improvement Committee. I also wanted to say a shout out to elections. I'm an old dog of learning new tricks. I early voted. I early voted. But I waited until I wanted to see my ballot and I would hear the ding. But we, down in our two big conference rooms, we, during the absentee process, the early voting process, have been very open and very transparent and have had three rows of seats in two big rooms for people to come and observe the process. Now, I think I only went down there two or three times just to kind of, you know, I wanted to see this in action. The seats were empty. Our staff were doing their things, but the seats were empty. So we were open, are open, taking advantage of the opportunity when it presents themselves. So things were running smoothly and I expect will run smoothly into today and late tonight. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. And thank you for making that trip and bringing back some new ideas for us. Commissioner Alrick?
I've got a list here and I'm gonna comment on a couple of the meetings that I attended. On the 16th, the Transportation Advisory Board. And on the Transportation Advisory Board, one of the things we're very concerned about pretty much on a widespread basis is safety. And you've heard of TOWards Zero Deaths. That's an initiative of MINDOD. We're not doing so well on that. For example, up to August, we had 289 deaths on the roads. And some of the information is kind of interesting. I just thought I'd go through, break that down a little bit. 207 were men, 82 were women. The 24 were pedestrians, four were bicyclists, and 50 were motorcyclists. Speed was a factor in 84. I don't know if you've noticed the crazy speed that people are driving. We talk about the Transportation Advisory Board. You can't build a project that's safe if people are gonna go 80 or 90 miles an hour. I mean, I'm not talking about somebody going five or eight or even 10 miles an hour. You can be going 10 miles over the speed limit on a roadway and you'll have somebody going 20 miles over that, you know, 90. You don't have to drive more than 15 minutes out on some of our freeways to see that. And so speed is crazy and I've been calling for more enforcement. Alcohol factor in 71 of the cases unbelted, not wearing seatbelts, 64 distracted driving, 18. DWIs were 18,000 in the same period. One thing that's, you know, safety is a concern, but also the Transportation Advisory Board, we continue to get this idea of equity. Always comes up. And I finally probably had enough of it. And I said, you know, I've been on the Transportation Advisory Board for 25 years. And in my opinion, and I think, I don't know if anybody would disagree with this, but we've been pretty good at equitably distributing the money in the region to the counties. So each county's basically gotten their fair share of the money. Okay, now, take that one step further. If Scott County didn't do something equitably with that money, that's our fault. That's on us. That's our problem. And I was hoping that in their minds they'd go, well, I'm from Hennepin County. If we didn't do something equitably, that's on us. And my problem with this equity, and some people said, if you dig into these numbers, these fatalities more, you'll find that more people of color were killed. Is that an example of inequity? I would say, well, I don't know. You could also say more of these people were killed in the urban core, where it's a denser population. More traffic movements, more pedestrians, more bicycles, more light rail. You know, there's a lot of light rail fatalities, you know, where people are hit by pedestrians or hit by light rail. So equity, but I said I've been on the board 25 years and I don't think we've done anything that lacked equity. And so if you could tell me what lacked equity, tell us, we would like to know. We would like to learn where we're causing harm. In other words, they've even done a harm study that what harms have been committed by roadways and stuff. And it's like, wow. So it's concerning. You know, I would say, this relates to my other report that I'm gonna talk about, is Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. I think we have a really good way to provide equity across our county. It's growing. It doesn't cover all the county yet, but the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Connect Ridership Program, where you can call and a small little van-type vehicle will pull up to your house and take you where you need to go, within Scott, within the zones of, you know, Scott and Dakota County. You know, you can't go to Minneapolis on this little van, but they'll take you to the transit station. And so we've got this thing going all over and, you know, people that don't have a vehicle, can't afford a vehicle, they can call and get the service and that's very equitable in my mind, a very good thing. And it's starting in Shakopee and Prior Lake in January. So those are the two things I really wanted to comment. I'll give the list of things I attended. But I think we, oh, in regard to the tab, they're gonna come up with a tool to measure equity. And I don't know how you do that or, you know. Anyway, I just said, we, we in the Transportation Advisory Board, we've been doing our best. The projects don't come top-down. They come bottoms-up from the cities and the counties. And we score them based on their merit. Well, anyhow. So that's my little frustration there with some of the themes in society that are affecting the transportation category. Okay, that's a commentary, I guess. The 22nd, the Fish Executive Committee, the 23rd, the Fish Board Meeting, the 28th, the AMC District 10 Meeting, which I thought was like, it's in Scott County. That's required. I gotta be there.
It was required.
So I enjoyed it. There were some good presentations. 30th, the MBT Board Meeting, first, the Scale Executive Committee. The fourth, the Met Council Imagine 2050 Prep Meeting. And some of this equity stuff will, is woven all into that. And the harms is woven all into that Imagine 2050. And, you know, it's just, some of it's mind-boggling. The fourth, Transit Mobility Management Board. That's into my report.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. For my report, on October 15th, we all attended a workshop after that board meeting. After that, I met with our Human Services, Health and Human Services Director, our County Administrator, and Economic Assistance Director to discuss some recent data about our healthcare programs, the usage of staffing. October 16th, had a MICA meeting that just the metro counties participated in to talk about issues that were pertinent to the metro counties, like Imagine 2050, Met Council, some things like that. October 17th, attended the Scott County Community Corrections Advisory Board. The 22nd was Chair Vice Chair Meeting. And then the 28th, of course, was the AMC District 10 Meeting that has been discussed already. October 28th, as Commissioner Brennan indicated, she and I went to the Shakopee High School Human Services Academy CAPS class. Thanks, students, for being here today. And just wanted to say that those students spoke to our AMC District 10 group and did just such a phenomenal job. And any emails I've received from attendees of that meeting talked about the students and what a good program it was and how they're interested in finding out what's going on in their own high schools. So you guys have changed some minds and encouraged some action. October 29th, I was at Shakopee High School for the Human Services Industry Council. Also, on October 29th, and then again all day yesterday, whatever day that was, November 4th, I had the State Community Supervision Advisory Committee Meeting. As you remember, that, that group is looking at how we do probation, the data, the processes and practices related to the increase in funding that we received. The report is due to the legislature here in, to the Commissioner in December. So lots of work getting that done and, and good work because we, we want, we want our good folks who are probation agents to have the tools they need and to be even doing better. We hope people who are on probation never come back to probation. So it's good work. It's hard. And we, we hope that, that we're gonna make some change statewide that, that will improve those outcomes. October 30th, Together We Can Steering Committee Meeting, where we reviewed really what Together We Can's accomplished over the last year and started talking about the, the next year. October 30th, also had NACO Healthy Counties Virtual Meeting. And then on October 31st, I had a, a meeting with Dakota County Commissioner Lori Halverson to just talk about some items of mutual concern, build some relationships with our neighbor to the east. November 1st was Scale Executive Committee Meeting. November 1st was also AMC Board Meeting. And then this morning, we all attended the Community Health Board Meeting. So that is the end of my report. Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, I forgot one item. I wanted to put a number to the MBTA Connect. And I'm gonna start sending you all the ridership reports of MBTA so you can see that. What is the ridership? Now, ridership is substantially down pre-COVID for all the region, not just MBTA, but for Metro Transit and so forth. It's, it's down substantially. And so we're seeing like 10% increase this, you know, this month or. But that, even when we talk about increases, it's still substantially down. Okay, MBTA Connect Ridership in the third quarter, 44,000 rides. In July alone, almost 15,000 rides. So that's pretty exciting that we're providing that kind of service to people. That's what I wanted to add.
Great. Thank you for that. All right, we'll move on to County Administrator Update. We have Deputy County Administrator Danny Lenz here. What do you have for us today, sir?
I do not have anything today. Thank you.
Good job. Very nice report. And on to number 10, County Attorney Ron Hostovar. Do we need to recess for an attorney-client meeting?
I'm sure we do not.
All right, well, thank you, you did a good job, too. Next, we are on to Item 11, which is to adjourn. Following this meeting, we will meet in workshop setting to talk about the Ag Society Property Management Agreement, and also have Commissioner Round Robin. Colleagues, if there's no other business to come before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I moved in second, and to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.